Do we have any requests to speak on non-agenda items? Is there any request to speak on non-agenda items? Hearing none, we'll move to superintendent reports.
All right, just want to give a brief kind of mid-year update on where we're at with some of our district goals and products that we've been working on, just real brief. One of the few goals that is not tied to back with student achievement has to do with our community relations and getting our feedback from our stakeholder groups on the referendum projects. And so, we did send out a community, actually a parent survey, getting feedback from parents on it. Excited to be able to share the results with the board at the January 28th board meeting. But that goal had to do with 75% of stakeholders rating communication also, and how we communicate with the community. So, we have multiple goals in there. So, we have the referendum results, or how we did on that, and then also just overall, how do people think we're doing communication-wise? And so, we have some great data we'll be able to share with you on the 28th. Also, financial services is working to implement our new time card system. And so, we're right in the thick of it, working through some of those components, probably start rolling out different pieces of it in the next month or two. And then, a full rollout of our electronic time cards should be up and going by... That works too. Should have that up and running by July 1st. A couple of other things, we talked about projects or different things that weren't necessarily on the goal list is, we did implement our employee engagement survey, so we'll be giving the board the results of that on the January 28th work session, and also the parent engagement survey and student engagement survey. So, we got lots of data, and on the 28th, we'll be working with the board to kind of go over the results and also kind of fill you in on what we're doing with those results administratively and what our next steps are. So, the second part of my report has to do with school safety update. Just a couple of things. Details are limited because of safety reasons. But as a heads up, so our Raptor visitor ID badge system is going to be installed in the middle school coming up here pretty soon. That'll be first at the middle school, and then it's going to be installed at all the other district sites as staff is trained. And essentially, it's one of the many layers of school security that we have, but essentially when people come to the building, we can have them scan their ID. It prints off an ID sticker for them to wear. Is that right, Tracy? And then, it also does a quick search, background check on any individuals that come in the building. I don't know, Tracy, if you have any more you want to elaborate on what that system does?
Correct. So, it goes, once your state-issued ID goes through the scanner, it does national search on, primarily looking for folks who may be on the sexual offense, any criminal history related to that. It also allows us to update the system to include any court orders where we have restrictions as far as parent access, so that we are, the front office is alerted right away. And then, we'll have protocols in place for how to handle those situations. But a significant improvement to how we check in folks who are coming into the building.
In addition, the shatter-resistant film installation on the different school sites is underway. I know they've been meeting with the contractors, and so that is on schedule over the next several, probably several to six, eight months that's installed, and that's the safety film that we've talked about on multiple occasions. And then, we've also ordered the replacement security cameras and storage equipment for middle school and elementary buildings as identified by our school safety grants. So, that's been ordered, and so we're moving forward with those things. So, things are moving along. Feeling pretty good about getting those things in place. But we have some other items that'll relate to school safety that'll be done during a closed session at the 28th work session because they would be exempt because of, the law allows us to be exempt because we're not, we wouldn't want to necessarily discuss every level of safety and security that we have in the buildings as defined by law enforcement. So, I'm going to go ahead and say that is the superintendent's report unless people have questions, at least today.
Any questions, the board members? All right, hearing none, move on to reports. We have an ELA update, and I see that that is...
Sandy.
Sandy.
All right. Tonight's teaching and learning report is focused on elementary English language arts. With me this evening is Amy Wise, elementary curriculum specialist, who brings her expertise in the area of literacy to her role, and we're fortunate to have her as a member of our team. On the next slide, we'll just share that, as mentioned in previous presentations, the district curriculum improvement process is a six-year process. Elementary ELA is currently in phase three. Last year, work was completed identifying and unpacking priority standards. This year, assessments were improved with the upgrade of the benchmark assessment system, and the development of interim assessments is currently underway. The next step is resource selection. And you slow down. Over the next few months, the elementary ELA committee will be reviewing resources and making a recommendation for fall 2019 implementation. The next slide shows us the elementary ELA components. At the elementary level, English language arts is the core of our work. It includes reading and writing, but also listening, speaking, spelling, word work, grammar, and handwriting. So, it takes a bulk of what we do at the elementary level. Next, Amy will share the key organization and delivery of ELA in Hudson.
So, on this slide, you see...
Just slide the whole thing toward you.
Back one. There we go. All of the components that Sandy mentioned on the previous slide are encompassed in the three blocks of balanced literacy, and you'll, we also refer to that as the literacy block. Now, you can turn to the next slide. The three blocks of balanced literacy are further broken down within each of these workshop times. Reading and writing workshop are set up in a similar way and follow a parallel structure. Each of those blocks have a whole group lesson that focus on grade level standards. In reading, we call that the mini lesson, and in writing and spelling, we call that the focus lesson. Both writing and reading have a small group component where teachers are focusing on student needs based on the data that we gather in the classroom. Both the reading and the writing time have independent work time, and students then use that time to practice their skills and strategies, either from the whole group lesson or the small group lesson. Teachers use some kind of management system to keep the other students working while they are meeting with their small groups. You might hear terms like the daily five, or literacy centers that they use to keep students practicing during that small group instruction. And then, finally, there is some sort of sharing where students can showcase the work that they've been doing independently. The last block in spelling is much shorter and does have a small group focus, and then may have some time for some independent practice. And the next slide. Our focus this year is on guided reading, and this year, we have a consultant coming out twice for all of our K-5 teachers for a half-day training where we've been focusing on the structure and the common framework, so that we have a consistent planning and a way of delivering our small group instruction. This time is meant for targeted instruction based on that student need, and that data comes from our informal classroom observations as well as some of our formal standardized tests. And the next slide. And we are supporting our teachers throughout this whole process. As you notice, we have a K-5 ELA committee, and we have representation from each grade level at each building, and the focus of that committee meeting changes to meet the literacy needs of the district. The next piece of that is the curriculum roll-through. Lisa Scoin and I spend a day at each building several times a year where we can meet with grade level teams, talking to teachers, answering questions, and getting any feedback based on our curriculum. Our instructional coaches are also a high support our teachers in the implementation of mainly guided reading this year as we focus on our new framework. And the next slide. As I mentioned, in the small group piece of it, we use our data to drive our instruction. And one of the standardized pieces then is using our FORWARD data, our NWEA MAP data, as well as PALS at the 4K and K level. And then, our informal assessments are our F&amp;P, or our Fuentes and Pennell Benchmark Assessment System, and our district interim assessments where we're using a new platform called Illuminate, as well as grade level developed common assessments. And the next slide. We've learned through the last few years then about the importance of teacher leadership, and I rely heavily on my K-5 committee to help us know what's going on in the classroom and make decisions that help our framework. We've discovered the importance of clarity and coherence through our communication tools. Our curriculum roll-through meetings have been highly beneficial to help us guide our work.
All right. So, if there's any questions, we'll take...
Mr. President, I have a question. First of all, I always like hearing about these things. Dynamics sound very exciting to me. How is, can you comment on how we assess students maybe in different ways? Like, some of them are stronger at, you know, structured assessment tests with, you know, multiple questions, and others maybe show their abilities better with writing, or maybe oral reports and so on. Can you comment on how you try to figure out exactly how to assess a child?
Sure. I'll start, and then you'll probably go up. You'll chime in. So, there's many layers. So, we might be doing something called like a running record. So, when the child is up in front of me in a guided reading lesson, I'm listening to them read, and I'm taking little notes. So, it might be, oh, they've missed three beginning sounds. I need to make sure I'm working with that child. So, it's very, you know, one-on-one, listening to that child read. Then, there's a benchmark assessment system, the Fuentes and Pennell, which is administered, for the most part, three times during the year. That one gives us a little deeper analysis of what students are able to do. We also then have like NWA MAP, the FORWARD exam in grades three, four, or five. So, everything from kind of a nationally-normed to I'm listening to you one-on-one on what you need to do. And then, as we said, we're starting some interim assessments that are using then state standards, and then we're having students use their devices, for the most part, to read those passages and answer questions that are similar to some of those that they'll find on more summative types of assessments. Is that what you were looking for? Amy, is there anything I forgot? Okay.
Ms. President?
Yes, Rob.
So, we're in year three of six with this process. Is there, are there metrics or something that we're tracking against? And if there are, how are we doing with the overall program?
I would say our main metrics are using our summatives, so like NWA, how we're looking against the nation in our English language arts, and then as well as FORWARD, which is in three, four, or five. And then, one of the reasons we're bringing in some of the interns is to hopefully do a better job of predicting from, throughout the year then, how our students will perform on some of those larger assessments.
Yeah, if I could just jump in real quick, Rob, because that's a good question. One of the things that we talked about previously, when we talked about elementary math, were the lessons that we learned that led to the success that we had with elementary math. And Amy talked a little bit about the clarity and consistency and coherence that was necessary. So, the implementation that we're going through now is much more closely matched to that because, quite honestly, we had not met the metrics that we're hoping for. So, this evaluation process is very much aligned in improving those very metrics.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I noted that in the early remarks, it said that assessments were improved with the upgrade of the benchmark assessment system, and it goes into what the next steps are. But what caused you to feel that we improved our assessments?
It really is the tool. It was an improvement of using the next edition of that assessment, and we feel that it does go deeper in its questioning. And so, we feel we're getting a better read on where students are at with the upgraded benchmark kits.
And I noted that you said it's a six-year process and that we're in phase three. Are all the phases exactly one year, or are we going to have some phases?
No, that's why we call them phases. Some of them, depending on the discipline, take longer or shorter. So, right. It's about a year, but not necessarily.
Understood. All right. Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, thank you for that important report on reading and writing and how we're, what we're doing to improve our English ELA work. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Continuing on the agenda, then we have one more report. And I assume this is Tim, since it's budget reporting. It's at the school levels.
Yeah. So, the report in front of you is something that's off of DPI's website. It's in regard to Assa Every Student Succeeds Act at the federal level. So, the federal government is requiring every school district across the nation to report expenditures by site. And so, DPI and states are working through this a little bit differently, but this is the, you know, the first rough draft, I would say, of reporting for our district. Incidentally, next week, there'll be a presentation by Bob Solner from DPI Finance on the report. But this is, these are our budgeted expenditures here, and so, we'll, this is being uploaded into the DPI system, and I'll just run through it rather quickly here, not in a lot of detail. But the first section under school expenditures are expenses that are directly related to each school. So, you know, teaching staff, support staff, et cetera, that are located at that site. The next section over E through G is school share of district expenditures. So, we calculate a dollar amount based on number of students in the district, and that gets just allocated over to each school site. Those are overall district expenditures. So, you get total expenditures per pupil, and then there, we report out also total school expenditures that get allocated, along with exclusions. Exclusions are going to be things like school construction, capital improvements, debt service, things that would really skew numbers because those are not things that you, they vary a lot from school district to school district. And so, that's kind of a basic flavor of the report. As we go along, I think this is, like I said, this is Wisconsin's first attempt at it. Some states already do this, and others don't, and Wisconsin was not one of those that had done this before. So, at the end of the year, we'll go back and upload our information into the system for actual costs, and then we'll go from there. But as we talked to head of DPI Finance, he said there's going to be a lot of revision to this as we go into the future, in the next couple of years, because this is the first attempt nationwide to start to put this information together. So, you can really kind of see where you're spending your resources, and you can probably link those things to other data based on performance and that type of thing. So, any questions?
Rob? Hudson Prairie, if you look at the federal per pupil, and this is more just out of curiosity than anything, Hudson Prairie's at 606. Willow River's at 439. Why is it so much more than our other schools?
They receive some additional federal funding, is what happens, is there's a site-based federal funding under title programs and some of those other programs. So, they actually received a little more than some of the other schools.
Other questions or comments regarding the school-level budget reporting? It's all required by the state, correct?
Yes. Yep. State and via the federal government.
Okay. Nothing further on that, then we'll move on in the agenda to topics for discussion slash possible action, and I would entertain a motion regarding the consent agenda items for, yeah, and with the expenditures pursuant to the language in the motion. Bruce?
Move approval of the consent items in that the chief financial officer and operations officer be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $3,917,736.50.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
Mr. President?
Yes, we have some recognition?
We do have some retirement announcements tonight, so several employees. So, our deadline is February 1st, so this is the first wave. I expect to have some more at the end of the month. Just want to mention them briefly, so we'll certainly do a lot more recognition towards the end of the year, but want to highlight these people. Mary Wicker is the first one. She's been at both Holton as well as Hudson Prairie. She has 34 years total service, with 26 years at the Hudson School District. Brian Huser, who's high school social studies, 34 years of service, well, 27 years in Hudson. Sandy Long is administrative assistant to the principal at Willow River, and she has seven years. She's a support staff employee. Linda Schwertl is from EP Rock, 35 total years teaching, 19 in Hudson. Diane Claycombe, also at EP Rock, 30 years teaching and 30 years in Hudson. Then, we have Deb Larson, who is at Hudson Prairie, 17 and a half years, with 15 years of certified staff teaching experience in Hudson. And then, last and certainly not least, Karen Halverson at Willow River, 35 years of teaching with 31 years teaching in Hudson School District. So, just with these seven retirees, we have 155 years of service to recognize tonight.
Let's give them a round of applause for their... Look forward to giving them more recognition at the end-of-the-year banquet. Is that in April again?
April or May, yes.
Yeah, it's always April or May.
We're still picking the date.
Okay. Date to be determined, okay. Very good. Moving on, the action items then we have up would be the second reading for two different policies. These, again, are state requirements. I think they were combined previously, and now we've got policy 343.45 and policy 3.343.46. One is the Start College Now and the other Early College Credit Program. This has been discussed now at two prior meetings. We always start at the work session, and then we do the readings, and policies are adopted by, upon second reading. And I noted that at the last meeting, there were no questions from the first reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we approve draft policy 343.45, Start College Now.
Second. Okay. We can do them certainly one at a time. That's fine. All those in favor of the second reading of policy 343.45, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. There a motion on our second policy?
Sure. Mr. President, I would move that we adopt policy number 343.46, Early College Credit Program as presented.
Second.
There's a motion, a second for their discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion passes. Next up on the agenda is elementary boundaries, and I understand that we have at least one person that would like to speak to this. As you know, our public comments, you know, we opened the meeting with those for non-agenda items, and there's an opportunity for public comment for each action item if necessary. Maria, would you like to come forward? And then, anyone else that would like to speak to the elementary boundaries and the committee recommendation, please come forward and let our secretary, Tim Minor, know that you would like to speak. Maria, thank you. You have the floor. And I should introduce you as, and thank you for your service on the boundary committee. You were a clear leader and spoke often at those meetings, and also listened to quite a few other people speaking. So, I appreciate your input here tonight. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. So, I was asked, there were three of us that were present at the last meeting that have been asked to be available to the board, should you guys have any questions about the recommendation that the committee ultimately came to. And through the course of that discussion, we didn't have the opportunity to share some of our feedback, and my other two partners were not able to be here. Tina, she had her baby, and Dave Moss was not able to attend tonight. So, I'm just going to provide, from a committee perspective, the recommendation. First, the committee, it was filled with a number of wonderful people who worked very hard and listened a lot and contributed thoughtful comments and suggestions for how this very difficult decision and recommendation that came forward. There was strong support from the committee for this recommendation, and the only piece that we struggled with in the end was Area 1, that we had left very undefined. And I know there's a red, some red lines, and I think those are, that red line came more fruition from the, from the school board's discussion of what that Area 1 might be. And I would say, just from a committee's perspective, Area 1 was very open to say this, there were opportunities where we moved some neighborhoods back into other schools, back into EP Rock, back into Hudson Prairie, and back into Holton specifically. And we, there was discussion about, is there the possibility to shift some of Area 1, very nebulous, back into Rivercrest? And we couldn't get the data on that area. The consultants didn't have it. And so, we were doing back-of-the-napkin calculations, trying to figure out, well, maybe if it's this number, we could do this section, and if it's this number, we could. And it was our last meeting, and we all kind of just acknowledged, we don't know. And so, that's how it got pushed to you all to say, if you can look at the numbers, if there's any amount of those students in that very nebulous Area 1 that could be brought into Rivercrest and just further reduce the impact to families, that we ask that you consider that. But that was the only area that we really had any, if that could happen, we would be supportive. Otherwise, everything else, we were very supportive of. And again, tough conversations, but thoughtful discussion, and I think there was strong consensus among the committee.
Do board members have questions? I have one to lead it off, and then I'll see if other board members. But I attended every one of the committee meetings, as I know you did. And my question, with the various, you know, opportunities, there was changing going on.
Mm-hmm.
And no matter where the committee ended, there was always going to be the last proposal that would be the latest.
Right.
But even with that, and with the Area 1 not necessarily outlined and read like it is in this map, would the boards, the committee still had a 73% approval, even with Area 1 going to Hudson Prairie, correct?
Correct.
And the other number that was quoted, the 61%, was those people that were clicking in, because this was all done with instant voting electronically, that they just wanted Area 1 looked at further. It didn't mean that 61% wanted Area 1 to be switched back to Rivercrest.
No, we wanted you to consider, we were adhering to our charge, and one of the primary things was boundary duration. And throughout all of this, yes, in the back of, I would say, everybody's mind on the committee was, we are impacting kids and families, and it's just a part of the conversation. So, it was only if it did not jeopardize the boundary duration, knowing that nobody wanted to come back to this conversation in five years.
Or fewer than five years.
Or fewer.
Right.
Yeah.
But, all right, very good. Is there, no, you were prepared the last time, and I want to just apologize, you know, that we didn't ask you any questions, or were it another way? I was aware that we were having three committee members come to the last meeting to be able to answer questions, would there be any? And there seemed to be more questions direct... And there seemed to be more questions directed at the consultant. Obviously, this was consultant-led. But perhaps there wasn't any, many questions from board members, because there was good attendance of board members at the committee meetings. We were able to see the process that you guys did in the extra discussion, which I thought, and I don't know if you would agree, that the small group discussions were a strength of that process?
Absolutely. I think it was the primary strength of that whole process, to be able to be a part of a small group and listen to each other a little bit more closely. And what was very interesting, from my perspective about those small groups, is when we came back and reported out, the consistency of the recommendations across the small groups. And we didn't go from one table to the next at each meeting. We sat at our table through the entire meeting and addressed the questions that were asked of us, and when we would report back, you heard a lot of consistent themes being reported back. So I found that reassuring.
Right. And then finally, on that Area 1, which is now defined in the red, there's an area east of Area 1.
Yeah.
I think it's been referred to as the Cottonwood neighborhood. And I had heard at at least one of those meetings, if not two, that the Cottonwood parents were of the opinion that, whether they were Rivercrest, or Hudson Prairie, or whatever school they got assigned to, that they were wanting to be able to move as a neighborhood together, contiguous neighborhood, which again, was one of the top criteria, was to keep contiguous neighborhoods together.
Yeah.
Do you feel that the committee's recommendation is consistent with what those sentiments were from the neighborhood?
Yeah, I actually live in Cottonwood, so yes.
Well, I figured you might know something about that then.
Yeah. So at the early beginning of the whole committee discussions, Cottonwood did get split. We span County Road N, and so the southern part of Cottonwood at one map was going to a different, was going, was staying with Rivercrest, and the northern part was going to Hudson Prairie. And there was a lot of feedback from the neighborhood saying, we are one neighborhood, please keep us together, no matter where we go. I know there are, nobody is, we can't make everybody happy, and there are still people that are not happy that we are not staying with Rivercrest and have concerns about that. But the core request to keep the neighborhood together has, the committee was able to achieve that and honor that in all of the other subsequent maps. So I think, from a committee perspective, it's a good, it's a solid recommendation.
Right. And that last meeting, that besides Area 1, there was areas A, B, and C, I believe.
Yes.
Two of them were voted to move back, the committee wanted, and then one to keep it as it was or to, you know, I'm saying this wrong, but one was, they were areas designated to either change or not change, I should say.
Correct.
And again, this is your fifth meeting, and by that time, you're tweaking, because this had been done throughout the process, was moving neighborhoods and trying to, different areas, and achieve that longevity of district, of boundaries, correct?
Correct. So the process had started at the very large, kind of defining what are natural boundaries, and then at the last meeting, we got down to some of the more granular, and that's where we, the beginning of the meeting started with the consultant highlighting areas A, B, and C. And if I remember correctly, A was a neighborhood on the northern border of Hudson Prairie that could have potentially moved to North Hudson. And the committee looked at that and said, well, the problem with that is you're going to drive right by their current school, Hudson Prairie, to bring them to another school. And throughout all of our conversations, the committee was pretty strong together to say that having kids drive by one school to go to another does not make sense. And so we said no to that. There was another B, I think, was around the EP Rock area, and trying to move a neighborhood that had potentially been going to Hudson Prairie and preserving them with EP Rock. And this was a situation where we could get data from the consultants, and they were able to identify the number of kids in that neighborhood and confirm for us at that meeting that that was not going to impact the ideal capacity. So the committee-
By keeping it at EP Rock?
Yeah, by keeping them at EP Rock. And so we agreed, yes, that makes sense, do not move those kids if you don't have to. Area C-
I think that was the sliver down by Old Highway 35.
It's a sliver down, yeah. And that one, I'm struggling to remember.
I think it was, again, a natural boundary issue with the highway and where the other-
It was, I mean, it's Old 35, and I think this is what led into, that sliver is what opened the conversation for Area 1, to say, we do have some neighborhoods there that, distance-wise, they are closer to Rivercrest, and they can kind of, again, almost, I'm there, that's the school I've gone to, and it's so close, and now I'm going to go up here. And we started asking for numbers more broadly about Area 1, to try and figure out, how many kids are kind of south of 94? Could we potentially, and the group that I was in, I mean, we were trying to figure it out and carve out what we thought were little neighborhoods, to say, well, maybe if there's 30 kids here, you could keep this little section. And the consultant was not able to provide us with the data, and that's how that got presented to you all for consideration.
Excellent.
And again, from the perspective of, one, we want to keep the boundaries, but if there's a chance to bring some kids and keep them where they are at, please consider that.
All right. I think that's a great summary of what was happening, and also highlights the intensity of your work and the detail that you tried to pay attention. This is not something that the committee, a duty they took lightheartedly, anyway.
No, not at all, yeah. It was very serious conversations, very thoughtful discussion.
Is there other board members then would have questions of Maria?
Rob? Yeah. And so through the process with Area 1, are, were you in this committee where you're at, do you feel confident, regardless of what happens, that ultimately it's going to meet our goal of, you know, having, not having to change boundaries again?
Yeah. What I will say is, with the information that we had, based on what the consultant was able to pull together and share with us, yes. And I will put this out there, that the consultant is, was charged with trying to project, what does the future look like? And that is, that is a bit of an unknown, right? And to the strength of their calculation, they pulled on many data points to say, here's how we're arriving at our projection numbers. And because they're doing that, and they're not relying on any one given data point to say, here's what the future is going to look like, that feels stronger than just relying on one or two data points. Am I an expert in their calculations? No. I mean, I work with data in my professional job, and I know how hard it is, and I know how you try and frame it up. So I think that would be something, if you have questions about their calculations, go back to them and ask them again what they're, what they pulled on. What they presented to us was data that pulled on, again, multiple sources, to say, here's what we know, and here's what we're projecting based on what we know from these multiple sources. And that's what we relied on from the committee perspective for our discussions. I never, it wasn't a major theme in any committee discussions to say, to question those data points, more from the perspective of understanding what's happening with enrollment, and making sure any adjustments were keeping within the ideal capacity, so that there was sufficient room to allow for growth at each of those schools. So if you remember, at one point, Hudson Prairie had, the ideal capacity was 99%, and that was of concern to the committee. And that's how we ended up starting to shift around to say, we want that down even more. Does that answer your question?
Your answer kind of spurs one other point I wanted to make, which is the implicit in this committee's recommendation, is that something would need to be done.
Yeah.
And, but one of the options that the committee would have had, would have been to just do nothing, kick the can down the road. And I didn't hear really any support from that, even from the very first committee meeting, was to just wait until we get some, one of the schools going over max capacity before we do something.
Yeah, in the discussions I heard at the small, at the small discussion tables and in the report out, there was never a comment made that said, we shouldn't be talking about this, and we should wait.
All right.
That was not a discussion point or a comment from the committee.
All right, very good. Any other questions, comments? Carrie?
Ms. President?
Yes?
Maria, thank you again for all of your work. Numbers I've heard for the area, I think, outlined as number one, have been between 61 and 65 students that would be impacted, and that's, I think, 65. I haven't heard a number for the Cottonwood neighborhood. Are you at all aware of how many kids might be impacted there?
We have, we have one school bus that services our neighborhood, all of Cottonwood. It does, excuse me, it does pick up along the way. I would say there's a good 30 kids. I didn't, I haven't done an exact head count. I mean, on my, on my road alone, which is Wilcoxen, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven elementary kids, and that's, so figure roughly the same. I mean, there's got to be about 30 to 35 kiddos in that neighborhood. But you would need to go back and get the actual numbers.
All right. Thank you very much for your, again, your time on the committee and your willingness to come forward tonight. Sorry that your other two committee members couldn't share the responsibility with you, but you did a great job. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
All right, we have one other request to speak on this item, and that is Patrick Johnson.
Good evening. My name's Patrick Johnson. I've been corresponding with all of you quite a bit on this, and appreciate the chance to speak to the group. First off, I was not part of the committee, but I did attend every one of the meetings except for one of them. It was something I became very vested in, and unfortunately, was not selected to be part of the committee. Throughout this process, we've heard a lot about longevity, longevity of these borders, or these boundaries, I should say. And the current plan that's up there, I asked the board to consider allowing as many students as possible in Area 1 to remain at Rivercrest. I understand the fact that there are 65 students that are being affected by this. If you were to add those, all those students back in, it would not exceed the ideal capacity of Rivercrest until the fifth year of this plan, and be by less than 1%, because only two, to be across it by two kids. On the flip side of that, you have Holton Elementary, that will exceed this by the start of the third year. This chart up here acknowledges that, but doesn't highlight it. Only the, only the fifth-year column is highlighted, not both of them, when in fact, it exceeds the ideal capacity much sooner than what's being shown. So I asked the committee to look at this and to be fair across all boards, all lines. We are going to be back here in five years to address the Holton-North Hudson issue, based on our consultant's projections. If the projections occur as they believe, by year six, you will be past max capacity at Holton Elementary, the way the boundary is right now. That's not what we want. What I'm saying is, if that's okay to the board, but we're yet concerned about Area 1 because it exceeds ideal capacity by two kids five years down the road, why is there a difference? I would hope that the board would apply the goals, their thoughts, equally across the district. What's good for one is good for another. I ask you all to please keep Area 1 kids at Rivercrest.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there any other request to speak on this agenda item? I'll ask one more time. Any other requests to speak on boundaries? Otherwise, we'll turn it over to now board discussion, and we can start with a motion, or we can just start with discussion, either one. The agenda topic is open. I've not seen anyone come to the podium again, so who wants to lead off, either with comments or a motion? Maybe put in a motion forward, and then we can debate that.
Ms. President?
Yes, Carrie?
I would put forth a motion to go with the committee's recommendation, including Area 1 included in the Rivercrest boundary, and the Cottonwood neighborhood to remain with Hudson Prairie.
Okay. So just to be clear, your motion is to not accept the committee's recommendation and to move Area 1 to Rivercrest? Because the recommendation is to move it, is to have Area 1 go to Hudson Prairie, so which-
Yes. Correct.
Okay.
Area 1 would remain at Rivercrest.
Okay.
I guess I'd be following their recommendation that we look at Area 1. So not exactly the recommendation that they put forth, but the rec, but the request that we address Area 1 ourselves, and my suggestion is to include that in the River, still in the Rivercrest boundary.
Okay. So I just want to clarify, because this is kind of important. Your motion is to not accept the committee's recommendation, because this is the committee's recommendation.
Correct.
Which is to have Area 1 go to Hudson Prairie, and you are, your motion is to keep it at Rivercrest.
Correct.
All right. Is there a second to that motion? Second? Okay. So it's been moved to second, can now be discussed, and open it up to board members who receive the same communications I have. Is there discussion?
Ms. President?
Yes?
Rob? This thing's loud. And so if, if the detail's correct, as far as Holton Elementary being at capacity or beyond capacity by year three, it would stand to reason that we're going to be revisiting these boundaries again sooner than we would hope. And if that's the case, then likely at that time, we'd be able to revisit Rivercrest as well, unless I'm missing something.
Say that again. I was looking for a document, I'm not finding, which was the five-year projections.
So according to that table, Holton Elementary will be at or exceed its capacity in year three. Is that, is that accurate?
Oh. Well, Holton is projected to be one or two students over ideal capacity, but not beyond max capacity.
Right.
In five years, right?
And so-
And there is no projection for the sixth year or the seventh, so to say that it's projected to go over max capacity is not accurate. That is subject to change.
Certainly, right. And so we know there's going to be a fair amount of growth up in the northern part of our, we expect, at least I do.
Well, you do, because the consultant said not, that that was not going to happen, given current St. Joe Township rules and regulations.
Certainly.
We haven't received any information from St. Joe Township, that they're going to start approving the development projects that have been rejected for the last couple of years, right?
Absolutely, nothing has changed, other than the fact that they are building homes, and Holton is not exactly a large school, and looking at the detail that we have before us, we're not talking about max capacity, we're talking about the projection. And if our goal is five years, I mean, that creates a challenge for us. And my, I think my point, and the reason I'm supporting Carrie with this motion, is that if ultimately we will be revisiting in, you know, within five years, or at five years.
Thank you.
Likely we'd be able to revisit Rivercrest at that time, if necessary.
Mr. President?
Yes, Sue.
I reviewed the board's approval for the guiding principles, and, you know, 50% of it comes down to duration and projected enrollments, and given the climate of the time we live in, projecting even five years is, you know, so much, there can be so many variables that can surface in five years. So I, I'm taking that as our most important, you know, consideration. And so I, I'm okay with the fact that maybe in five years, we have to revisit it, revisit Holton, and perhaps even North Hudson, as things are growing and changing in our community. Secondly, I, we received many specific responses from the community, and I read every word of the comment section- And I read every word of the comment section that were sent to Tracy. And I find myself, and especially how eloquent Marie has spoke tonight. And I, and I have had exchanges with David Maz too, who's also, I think, a very balanced thinker. And so I guess I'm perhaps like Carrie, wanting to respond to, you know, these motivations that have, that have been offered to us. So I guess I'm going to be inclined to go with the idea of making Area One stay with, or suggesting that Area One stay with Rivercrest and then go with the rest of the map as we have it. Because I don't think we can plan beyond five years. But I do think that we have, the committee has, and the board's work has respected the duration concept. And we certainly have had a lot of numbers to look at.
Other comments?
Mr. President, looking at this, a lot of, you know, opinions about growth and development. I always looked at Holton and North Hudson as kind of a separate thing across the, across the river. Kind of a, if they do need to make a change, if, if there is more growth in Holton, and I've talked to three or four, you know, St. Joe officials, they don't see it. Even if it does come, it's going to be larger lots. You know, it's an easy switch to move some kids to North Hudson where we have a lot of extra capacity. So if that needs to be revisited in three years because of some extraordinary growth we did not foresee, we don't have something that affects the entire district. When I talk with city officials of Hudson and have listened to the mayor say, talk about high-density development south of ninety-four, continuous water, you know, right, you know, eighty acres here ready to develop. And, and when people tell me, well, that's, that's just, that could be like nothing, that could never develop maybe. You know, years ago, we thought Rivercrest was, this was a bad property to put an elementary school on because all the growth was going to be north of town by Holton with the, with the bridge, new bridge, and it didn't happen. And even now that it's happened, yeah, there, it could change and, you know, boards change and zoning changes and, but for, you know, the concern is Rivercrest. And I don't know if we want to say we, to invest this effort to say, let's, you know, review it again in two years, three years. I, I think we might be doing a disservice to the efforts, the well-respected efforts of the committee, the investment we put in, in time that was put into this to get to where we are. I will just kind of leave it at that, that I, I would be, I would, I would be siding with the, the plan of, of the, of the committee. And if we have to look at it in three years, I would be disappointed. I'll leave it at that.
Mr. President?
Bruce?
I, I think I probably tend to side more where, with Bob's comments there, just in terms of coming back to this. And, and I, I live in Holton. I, I do speak with people up there. I don't know that we'll see a ton of change up there. I, I could be wrong, but they are still all at minimum three-acre lots. And the people that are, you know, seeing growth over there are in Richmond and, and Somerset. I thought we would maybe see more here. But it's, it's not happening as quick as possible. And Holton is small. It's not like we've got open classrooms there. It's not, not a situation where we are going to see tremendous growth at some point in time. There's always been the decision or discussion to say, well, gee, you're going to have to maybe pull some kids from North Hudson. You know, we'll make a few phone calls to some families. Or if it were too many at, at Holton, maybe you'd call up North Hudson and you would try and, you know, move some of the individuals in and amongst that, that region out there. But to Bob's point, it is across Lake Malibu. It's not easy to get a bus over there. But between those two schools, it's, you know, something that has, over the years, I think, worked pretty well if you're dealing with a few kids here or there and, and managing sections and making sure that you're not adding cost into the, into the district. I would be disappointed if we had to come back in even five years down here. And to me, if we're going to have to come back in three years, I'd rather, I'd rather wait and, and making a decision right now. Because I, I think coming back is just creating the same situation, but for a different set of people. Everyone is going to have a different emotional connection and I respect that. I appreciate it. Taking nothing away from those that are impacted here. I, I'm sure it is incredibly difficult for everyone's family. And not suggesting that it's, there's ever a good time. But I think to do it now and then come back in a few years and have to have the same conversation, it will be very similar and we'll have the same doubts and questions and families impacted. And I, I'm, I would be a little reluctant to move all sixty-five back into Rivercrest personally.
Okay, Heather?
So I want to start by saying that I do think it's really important that we value the work of the committee. I know I've, as I'm sure many of you had, I think I've had seven emails since our December board meeting. So thoughtful emails, seven emails from folks with opinions about, about it. And a few of them who weren't aware of the process, didn't know until very recently that this was being discussed. And, you know, that's a, that's a challenge always because I know we, we communicated directly with all parents of elementary school. Children used every vehicle that we had, and yet there are still some, some parents who just, who didn't get the message. And I can see where that would be frustrating to feel like very late in the game, you're finding out about something. That said, we've had a committee full of folks who committed their time, both at meetings and between meetings, to reviewing data and really trying to come up with a solution that met the guiding principles that we, that we laid out. I do feel like it's a bit, I don't think disingenuous is the right word, but to say that the motion was rejecting the recommendation of the committee. And I, not that I can look into a crystal ball, but I feel like what the committee said is, this is the map we're giving you. And gosh, if we'd had one more meeting, we would have been able to give you a recommendation that answered this question about Area One. But we don't have one more meeting, so here's our recommendation and please look into Area One. So again, they're not here, they can't use their clickers. But when I look at, if I'm looking at the data right, what I think I'm seeing is that by adding sixty-five kids, or not adding, keeping sixty-five kids at Rivercrest Elementary, it means that the projection is that five years out, we would be two students over ideal capacity. My gut is, if those numbers had been in front of that committee, that might have been the recommendation that came through. I have a lot of confidence in the numbers that the consultants gave us. I appreciate your comments, Maria, about them pulling from multiple sources. I have a feeling that is why their track record, their accuracy with projections with other communities has been so strong is because they're looking at numerous data sources. So even though one, any one of them, they might not feel a hundred percent confident in, they're combining all of them. So I feel pretty confident that five years from now, we're going to look and go, huh, they weren't that far off. That said, sixty-five kids staying, keeping at Rivercrest appears to put us only two kids over ideal. Not maximum, but ideal capacity five years out. I don't think that's something that we would be panicking about and coming back to redraw boundaries. I don't know. So I guess I, and when I look at that Area One, you know, all, someone referenced all sixty-five kids. The challenge there is that one of our commitments was to honor neighborhoods. And that is not an area where there's an easy line to draw. You know, I do look at it as a parent, I understand, especially for the folks at the southern end of that Area One. It just seems illogical that your kid would be schlepping all the way up when right now they have a straight shot across to Rivercrest. I get that. And our challenge, I think, is, given our commitment to neighborhoods, it's probably an all or nothing with Area One because there's not a natural place to draw a line between those families in the southern part and the northern part of, of that, of that area. So I'd appreciate a correction of the way I'm understanding the data with adding those sixty-five kids or keeping those sixty-five kids in, in the Rivercrest attendance boundary. But if, if I'm understanding it correctly, I lean towards supporting the motion as it stands. Because I think that, that's a, that's a lot of kids we won't disrupt to five years out. Still be looking not bad when it comes to ideal capacity, if I'm understanding the numbers correctly.
Mr. President?
Rob?
Call the question, roll call, vote?
Okay. The motion is to call the question, which would end the debate and deprive any more board members of having any other comments. All those in favor of, but you want to roll call, vote on the call to question. So Rob, go, you can go first. Brown?
Aye.
Hanson?
No.
Logland?
No.
Whitaker? This is a motion to call the question and end the debate so that no more comments can be made by board members.
Oh, no.
Kattas?
No, I want more discussion.
Bowman?
No.
Johnson? No. All right, so the motion to call the question fails. Now we're open to continue comments. Is there anybody else that had other comments?
I'll just make this comment because I, you know, had, have this in my mind quite a bit since our last discussion. But just this past Wednesday, Mayor O'Connor did come speak to the Rotary Club and, you know, just shared about all of the development activity that's happening and where that activity is happening and, and, you know, frankly, did speak about all of the development that's not necessarily just planned, but like taking action right now. And, and, you know, building is underway. Again, debatable, you know, whether they're going to be retirees or they're going to be, you know, families with, with children. I don't know the answer to that. I, I don't know that anyone will. If they are more of retiree age, you know, are they moving from homes that are in Hudson there? And that will open up other single-family homes? Again, have no idea, but the reality is there is a tremendous amount of activity and building going on down here. And again, I think it just kind of speaks to some of the change and where the change is happening. And the reason for, again, just some of the support as to why I feel the way I feel. Not necessarily saying it's, you know, again, these are all projections. But that was at least insightful to see what was happening and, and all of the real activity. Not, not necessarily just planned or potential, but activity right now.
Mr. President?
Yes, Bob?
I echo Bruce's saying from city council meetings and speaking to city council members. We all, years ago, thought that natural growth and annexation would take us out to our UU property and probably would have no problem with water and all that kind of stuff. And, and it, it didn't happen. The difference here that kind of surprises me and, because it's kind of an about-face from our normal way of developing around this area, is how aggressive the mayor has spoken about not just developing annexation, being open to annexation. The only place, you know, they see to expand is south, as River Falls moves north with their ever-increasing industrial park and whatever. But the, the thing that really got to me was the high density. When he spoke this past year three times about normal developments that we're used to seeing with nice winding cul-de-sacs and single-family houses. And he called them revenue-neutral, meaning they barely cover the cost of roads and services and snow plowing and being not the ideal way of developing, looking for higher density. And that's, you know, what you're seeing. And also the golf course, you know, people were thinking it still would be a golf course someday. People were thinking that it would take them five years to develop it. I still have people telling me that it's still developing slower than planned. It's, it's, it's getting close, a lot faster than, than most people thought. And that, that type of development right around here with the water right here, that's what Holton doesn't have. That's what Town of Hudson out by UU doesn't have. So it will be development down here. And, you know, the, the dog track is just the start. The property right over here behind the hockey rink is already ready to go. Property right here, another, what, forty acres, eighty acres?
Sixty-seven acres.
Sixty-seven acres. It's, it's going to be higher-density housing than we're, than we're used to seeing. So I just would echo what Bruce is saying. I think the city has shown us that they are being more aggressive than we've seen in a long time since they probably built the industrial park and put that through.
Okay. I would just add that what Bruce has said and, and Bob, and that, I heard the mayor too. He spoke to our Rotary Club and he was very clear, the expansion of the city is going to be to the south. There's some potential distant for going east, which I think would implicate Hudson Prairie. So we're going to, we're going to see growth. I think one of the things is that they've reassessed the water sanitation system. And what was once thought to be near-capacity, we're only about halfway there. They said that Hudson could go to twenty-five thousand population and still accommodate that sanitation current system without having to build another one. So we're going to see growth in Hudson. It's a matter of where. We hired the consultant who has an excellent track record of these projections. Personally, I don't see the role that the Holton school and what happens at Holton impacting why Area One would go to one school or the other. Because as we've seen, whether we keep it at Rivercrest or whether it moves to Hudson Prairie, it's going to push both of those schools near ideal capacity. But the fix for Holton is not to change anything with EP Rock or Hudson Prairie or Rivercrest. The switch, the fix to Holton would be where the capacity is and the adjacent capacity is at North Hudson by easily a hundred students. Some of the comments that have been made or arguments for, I guess the motion is to keep Area One at Rivercrest is that, you know, River, or Hudson Prairie is going to be increased to this number that is just unconscionable. It's going to go to five-hundred-five if it were to be moved. But Hudson Prairie's been at six-sixty-four. So this notion that the school district would never be able to figure out the logistics of that many students at Hudson Prairie, there's been a lot more students at Hudson Prairie. So that's, again, not a reason to not move it to Hudson Prairie. I was willing to go with what the committee would come up with. I think that was a commitment from the very beginning. I saw the excellent people on the committee. And I agree, if they had had more time, maybe they would have been more definitive on this. But while Heather, you think that the two extra would have led them to believe, I heard Maria say that if they could carve out thirty or forty students. And I've heard the number sixty-five, but just in the materials that were provided to us, it changes Hudson Prairie by going with the motion as made would mean Hudson Prairie for next year would be four-forty-seven and Rivercrest would be at four-seventy-seven. So it's a difference of fifty-eight from what the projection is with the committee's recommendation of moving it to Hudson Prairie. Whether it's fifty-eight or sixty-five, it's still more than carving out thirty or forty. So on this one, I could support really either way. It's just my reasons are quite different than those made, you know, with the motion. And that is, I don't want to necessarily have to be back here sooner. I thought the board was strong and I think basically it's a rethinking of what the priority was, which was longevity of the districts is no longer a priority, but instead trying to impact as few students as possible. And if that was the number-one priority, the, the committee would have just said, let's not change anything and just wait and see what happens and wait until we're, you know, have a school that's near max capacity before we do something. And we're trying to be proactive here. I think we're being proactive either way, so I could support either way. But like I said, my reasons are, are different. I see a completely separation of what's happening at Holton from what may be happening down on this side. But I think in five years, we're going to be here talking about Rivercrest. But I think in five years, we're going to be here, um, talking about Rivercrest at above, um, ideal capacity and probably approaching max capacity.
Mr. President?
Yes, Rob.
The, um, all the wonderful growth that we were hearing about, all that's been accounted for by the, the consultant, I'm assuming, is that fair?
Uh, what's that?
The growth that we were talking about?
Right.
You know, Bruce's comments, Bob's comments, all that's been accounted for by our consultant?
Uh, probably not all of it, because some of these newer developments have, uh, since the consultants had the original conversations with the city in the spring, there's several other developments that have, have come up, uh, that the city is just kind of starting to brief us on that aren't necessarily, um, through the annexation process. So, you know, a lot of what the consultants also did is they tried to look at these different zones and say, what's the likelihood of five years down the road, three years down the road, ten years down the road? One of the things we're finding, at least through talking with the city, is some of these areas that we were thinking probably were more of our five-to-seven-year down-the-roters, or seemed like they're kind of sliding up a little bit, um, didn't quite, you know, as you see the mayor road development, it's already clear-cut and ready to go. Uh, so, that's, that's the only concern, is that, yes, all of this growth, I think, was in, was planned for, but the big concern is, is it happening a little bit sooner than what everybody initially was thinking? And is part of that driven by the most recent wastewater treatment report that we, the city got, where they said they could handle a lot more development sooner? So, um, yeah, I, I think whatever you guys decide, whether you keep Area One at Rivercrest or don't, I think in the next five years, we'll, we'll be able to handle either way. But as I would remind you, we will probably be back here to have that discussion, you know, at least in the next, probably, it takes about two years, if you think about when we're projecting out, because we started this in February, it impacts about eighteen months later. Um, you know, we may be back here in the next three to four years to have the discussion about what to do with Rivercrest, um, because we don't have numbers of years six through ten and, and what that looks like. So, um, yeah, I would, I would absolutely tell you that we, um, we can handle it either way. The other piece on the Holton, just to kind of clarify, we had discussion in the committee, um, the reason we erred on the side of running Holton over its, uh, ideal capacity was to err on the side of trying to make sure we keep two sections at Holton, so that we don't end up with a single-section grade. What that means is only having one teacher in a certain grade level, and then those kids are basically in the same class with the same kids all the way through. So, um, that's why Holton was looked at a little bit different than Rivercrest or anything else, is we were going to err on the side of allowing it to get a little bit bigger, um, in order to, to try to make sure that we didn't get caught in some of those single-section grades. And so, just kind of as a point of clarification, um, as you work through it. So, um, yeah, that's kind of, kind of how we're sitting on some of these different points.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just one final quick comment. I too could go with, um, Area One, uh, remaining as planned here to go with Hudson Prairie or to, um, be returned, if you will, to, uh, Rivercrest. Um, and I have inordinate respect for the work of the committee. And I think I was, I think I only missed one meeting, and I would walk around and listen. One of the exercises you did at the beginning that, uh, was influential to my thinking was looking at neighborhoods. So, when people wrote us and I read through the comments that were sent in, I really responded strongly to, um, the idea of, of how things work so well for, for certain families. What I excluded, um, as a factor, because we were, we were never given this in our mission, was the discussion about busing or, um, you know, uh, and, and I know it's important to a family, uh, that your child would be, you know, taken away from their classroom with the kids that they know and so on, in third or fourth grade and so on. But, you think about military families or, you know, uh, it happens. But, and, and I respect the, the disruption. But, really, our assignment as a board, as a committee, was not to have to figure out a lot of those kinds of things. Um, and I think the numbers, um, I, I read all the numbers today and, and they play an important role in what, how I'm going to decide tonight. But, um, I can respect Carrie's, uh, modification of the original, um, you know, committee recommendation, um, and I can go with this map just as, as it is as well. So, I'm looking forward to hearing from others.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Heather.
So, I appreciate the question about, um, because I was thinking the same thing, I think, um, Bruce and, um, Bob, maybe as you were speaking about recent conversations you've had, because my wonder as you were speaking was, so is this making you think that development is going to be more than was projected by the, um, by the consultants or not? And I think what I'm hearing is, yes, perhaps, and yes, possibly sooner. So, when I look initially, so, so, when you look initially at those numbers, five years out, where will we be with Hudson Prairie versus Rivercrest? Those sixty-five kids, I think roughly moving them, keeping them at Rivercrest versus moving them, you're flipping. So, you're taking Hudson, who is now projected with this move, to be at like ninety-six, ninety-seven percent of ideal. Obviously, that number's going to drop, because those kids would be at Rivercrest, which then would be up over a hundred and one. So, you've got one school or the other that five years out is, is, is at close to or more than ideal. I think the part then that I'm thinking about as I'm listening to you talk especially about these recent conversations is, and at that point, five years from now, where is the growth going to be for the next five years? It's not going to be at Hudson Prairie. That's not the school that we want to leave open with room. It's Rivercrest that we would want five years from now to have room for the growth that is both already planned and moving ahead more quickly, maybe than we thought a year ago when the consultants did their work. Um, so that does change my thinking a little bit, because, like, the thought was, we don't want to be redrawing these boundaries in three to five years. So, it's not as easy as flipping those two numbers, and it's one or the other, but it is about where do we want the room to be five years from now? And we want the room to be at Rivercrest, because that's where the growth is going to be. So, um, I appreciate the question and clarification.
Um, Mr. President? I think, uh, yes, that's what I, that's what I think, that they did take into consideration growth, uh, for a lot of these areas. I did not get a straight answer on Red Brick Road, if that wasn't part of their, because that was a more recent development plan heading to the city.
Yeah, it was part of their, yeah, I think if you go back and you look at some of the earlier presentations, and Tracy has those on the website, you can see areas that they kind of highlighted for, you know, zero to five, five to ten, and ten-year beyond. Um, and it was on, I think, uh, it was either the zero to five or five to ten. I think it was, I think it was the five, ten, but I can look for it right now.
So, and I'm not claiming to be a property expert and development expert. I thought the St. Cray Bridge would have been built twenty-five years ago. But, um, when you look at the zoning, how it's going, and the amount of farmland that's open, that isn't like Town of Hudson with restrictions, or North Hudson with restrictions. I mean, yes, it might not happen as fast, or they might not topple like dominoes, but when, you know, from what I hear, you've got, that's the biggest opportunity. And, and, you know, I would have thought that all those farmers up in North, or North, or St. Joe, in Holton area, I thought they would have sold years ago to developers, and they would have had people on the board that would have voted for rezoning. And it just hasn't happened. So, that's why, and just my single opinion, um, that put in with the, with the aggressiveness of the city. That's why I think they could be estimating on the safe side. But, when I first moved to Hudson, we were experiencing fifteen percent growth a year, and, or, uh, growth in home values, and people were, you know, going crazy. Now, a lot of things changed, you know, Woodbury changed their zoning, and higher-density housing in Woodbury slowed us down. No one expected that development in Hudson. But the demographers told us that, back ten years ago, that the development would be south of ninety-four in this area. And, um, I didn't listen then, I had learned a little lesson, but, just shouldn't, not dissuade anybody's opinion. But to your question, Heather, I do feel that, that combination of factors with the property down here, that, that they would have had to take a safe look at it, probably not maybe as aggressive as they could have.
And just to answer your question, I would say similar. I don't know that I'd necessarily think it's going to be more, but I, I think it's real, and it's less of a projection than it is, um, what's happening. So, you know, to me, that, that's kind of where I look at it. I, I, I try and, try and strip the emotion out of this as much as I can. It's not easy, uh, reading those emails, your, your heart, um, sometimes feel like you want to pull it out of your chest, uh, because you can certainly appreciate where the parents sit. Um, but if you, if you look at the data, and if you look at some of the activities that are happening here, I think it's hard to not, not take into consideration, uh, the activity that's happening south.
Mr. President?
Yes, Carrie.
Uh, looking at the, um, duration of boundaries, um, not to minimize, um, the importance of that, but also not to look at, it's not sixty-five families, it's sixty-five kids. In five years, this may not be an issue for them, when we're relooking at this. And, it, it's certainly more than an inconvenience to the board, uh, but it's not as big a deal as it is to these families. Um, and the thing that, that anybody probably moving to Area One in the next five to ten years would, would consider, is you may not know what school you'll be attending if you, if you move to that area, which these folks, obviously, they knew what school they'd be I don't, I don't want to bring this burden back upon ourselves, but, uh, I think we need to weigh whether, uh, certainly we could, we could undertake this again in five to ten years, rather than, uh, displace, displace the kids now for the, the growth that'll happen, uh, in four to five years.
Okay. While you're thinking of any further, um, comments or remarks to make, I just note that on the committee, using the committee recommendation, and then what happens in projections, this is more the consultant, not necessarily the committee, but between twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty, and twenty-two, twenty-three, that's, you know, three years. But, uh, in those, in that four-year span, Hudson Prairie is projected, regardless of what number they start with, they're projected to add two students over that time. And that's a net of two students, because there's going to be students that roll up to middle school and high school during that four years, and then there's people that move in and people move out. Whereas, Rivercrest during that same period of time, two thousand nineteen, twenty to twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, is to increase forty-eight students in that same time period that Hudson Prairie is projected to add two. So, yeah, it should not be a surprise, it's not going to be a surprise that Rivercrest is growing. It's a question of how fast that's going to be and whether all these developments were taken into account. Um, is there, I, the other point I was going to make was, again, any idea that this is being, this is like a foregone conclusion. If anybody that's been in this room for the last forty-five minutes can see, it's not a foregone conclusion. We don't have anything that was predetermined. Uh, the administration is completely neutral on the recommendation, there's nothing that they're guiding this to. So, those people that put that in their letters, that's not the case, that this is a, a foregone conclusion. And if you look at the impact for next year, a number of sections, whether we move Area One to Rivercrest, or we go with, um, which is the motion, is to move Area One to Rivercrest, I understand that. It's a hundred and four sections total. So, if we had done what's on the map, that's a hundred and four sections total. So, it's, that, again, if this is not coming down to dollars and cents, we're not doing it for that point. This is, um, basically, as I see it, it's a decision, are we going to, uh, disrupt more families and kids now, uh, for what we have a pretty good ideas coming down the road? Or do we delay this for four to five years, it appears, and then be back here with probably very similar considerations? I'd like to hear what board members think as far as the answer to that, if it's worth it to them. I think Carrie's already indicated that it is to her.
If I could, uh, say one thing regarding that, that
Sure.
... be something that we adopt, we haven't talked about at all, adopting a phased plan, where Rivercre- where Area One right now would remain with Rivercrest and, and X number of years would move to Hudson Prairie based on the consultant's, uh, projections, which we're now hearing probably not, or not as, were more conservative than what may be the reality. So, perhaps, um, in a time period of three to five years, when Rivercrest hits, uh, a certain number, enrollment number the following year.
So, it's more of a trigger mechanism, like if they hit ideal capacity, whether that's three years or five years?
That's, that's something we've discussed.
Okay. All right. That's not necessarily an amendment to your motion right now, but, um, right, just a discussion. All right, very good. Heather?
So, follow-up question, Carrie, so I think, to make sure I understood what you're saying, so that, um, like, for the next period of time, families buying homes in that defined attendance area would know that, um, when Rivercrest attendance gets to a certain level, their, their neighborhood is going to be flipped to Hudson Prairie, and they would know that when they were coming in, into the neighborhood? Is that what you're thinking?
Yes, and I'm wondering if any realtor right now is thinking those, that's not going to do any good for the home prices if there's that question, but...
Well, which is worse.
It's two good schools.
Which is less certainty, saying that we're just going to revisit the whole thing in five years, or indicating now
True.
... that when that trigger occurs, is it the next school year, is that, I mean, that would be
Okay.
... it's a matter of when. Right. Are there further thoughts on that point raised by Carrie? I, I think it's going to be tough to tie the hands of future board members. Obviously, it'd always be subject to other considerations, because something else could happen in five years where a massive amount of acreage is annexed, you know, to the east, and then that would implicate Hudson Prairie. But, yes, Bruce?
I, I believe it'll, it'll just be different families. That'll be faced with a situation that will be impacting. And, and I don't, you know, at that point in time, where, where do you choose to move? You know, there's probably not a safe area, you know, maybe there is if you probably live right next to the school, but, um, I just, I wonder, you know, if, if we're displacing some kids now, we're making a move, and then we're going to be coming back and displacing other kids, they're just going to be different kids and different families, but the same emotions and the same heartache for those, those kids and those families. And, you know, you've got, you've got, uh, a myriad of letters, you know, one family that, I recall a letter that had said, uh, they are going to be moved from Rivercrest to, uh, Prairie, but they've got a child going into middle school, so it'll actually be okay, because now they'll have two kids at the same school. And, you know, dependent upon where everyone's at with their life stage and where they're at with their children, um, it will impact their feelings and emotions differently, I think, in, in those situations. Um, but I, I think the, if we make these decisions at a, at a later time, it, it won't be a different conversation. I think it will just be different families that are impacted.
Well, and even Carrie, thinking about that, I was initially very intrigued, and then I think one of the things that we've heard from people is not liking things sprung on them last minute in this process, or feeling like it was. So, there could be a whole bunch of parents of three, four, and five-year-olds currently in Area One, who would not like that idea, because to your point, that means it's their kids that are going to get affected. So, it is, I mean, it's at some point, kids are going to need to move from one school to another, and, um, it's going to be hard, no matter who it is, but, um, there might be folks who would not like that idea at all, because right now, it's not going to affect them, because if they move to Hudson Prairie, their family will grow up going to Hudson Prairie, whereas, um, if we would delay the trigger, um, it could affect their kids from a move standpoint. So, I think you're right, Bruce, that no matter when it happens, at some point, families are going to be, kids are going to be disrupted.
Mr. President? Yes? I'm, I'm hearing now, change, kind of a changing, well, if we do, if, if we keep Section One at Rivercrest, you know, it might be good for five years. I, what I was hearing originally, and from the numbers that I saw, I thought, I thought, well, three years, potentially less, you know, or, so, I mean, if, if it was, if it was a solid five-year, you know, I'd say, well, maybe, you know, but... But if it's less than that, to me, from the committee's work and from the effort put into it, I would see that as a fail on us. If it turned out that it was three years, if it turned out that it was two, I mean, we saw this a decade ago or better when, through no fault of anyone involved, but they made decisions and maybe some decisions were made to appease certain people, neighborhoods, whatever, to try and soften the blow. And if I'm not wrong, it was a year and a half, they were back making a change within two years. Does anybody remember that? Or... But, so I would, that is a big concern of mine, is that I don't want to be here doing it again or have another board. If we could, if you could get five to seven years out of this change versus three to five years, that has to weigh into it for me.
Mr. President?
Yes, Sue.
And we, on everything else we've been doing on this board, we're data-driven. So I value the data.
All right. Is there any other comments? I guess to get to your point, Bob, as far as whether it's five or whether it's three, that's kind of what Carrie's proposal of, understanding that if there were a trigger, then it would go into effect and we wouldn't have to necessarily go through a nine-month process again.
I would also be concerned, you know, or want the opinion of administration and people who are involved with the running of the buildings in the district or the busing and everything. What does it mean if we do it again in three years? What kind of challenges does that bring for those folks involved with that, too? You know, I've heard people say, why don't we just wait? We can, if there's some changes, we'll address it then. You know, I've been told it is quite a job to put through this process, and it is a timely process. So as far as a trigger method, you know, I agree with Bruce. I think you're just pushing it to some other parents who are going to be upset and maybe more confusion added in. When I moved to town, I really didn't give much thought to which of the schools my children would be attending, and there's no guarantee for that. I don't think this district has a history besides the last one of doing kind of a redo, but historically has been very consistent and tried to minimize the changes that affect families. I think that should be a big goal.
Any other comments? Yes, Heather?
Can I go back? Nick, something I think I heard you say earlier, following up on Bob's comment, was that either way, you thought five years from now we'd be fine? It's after that that we aren't certain about? Am I paraphrasing you incorrectly or is that...
I mean, according to the consultants' recommendation, I mean, their numbers, it looks like, you know, we'd be within ideal capacities either way. You know, the big, nobody has the crystal ball. I mean, how quickly some of these developments come online. It's, yeah, I mean, it's really hard. I mean, we could head into a major recession in a year and a half, and all of a sudden, you know, it could go the other way. I mean, it's just, it's our best guess on what we think we can do. I would, whether you decide to keep one in or not, the only feedback I would get is, I think people want to know one way or the other. This uncertainty of this trigger mechanism, I think, creates a level of uncertainty that people that may move into those neighborhoods under the thought that they're at one or the other, and then all of a sudden, you know, there's a trigger that changes that with no board discussion, no process or anything like that, may have some people kind of crying foul. I mean, I understand it, and I think in a perfect world, it would actually work pretty well. I just think it could really cause some hard feelings as you work through it. So I think that would be the only, the only big consideration with that is, like I said, based on the projections that they have, and you've got to remember, these are five-year projections, but projection number one, because when they did our projections, it was last year. So you're already a year into projection number one. So we're really about four years out on their numbers if you start to think about this, so...
I have a question, just looking at the chart where it says elementary enrollment history. In 2007, 2008, which is the year before this school came online, EP Rock was at 636, Hudson Prairie at 664, North Hudson 468, and Willow River 471. Now, those enrollments were, are all much higher than what we have currently or even what's projected for next year. But I saw that Rivercrest peaked in 2013, '14 at 593, and now they're at 523. Just, do we know why that is? Is it just some kind of cycle that they're rolling through? Because we didn't change the boundaries and they dropped 70 students in five years.
I think, you know, a lot of that has to do with, you know, when we did our enrollment projections, pre-referendum and everything else. I mean, we had the residual effects of the 2008, 2009 recession. A lot of times, those tend to be about a five-year lag on students as it works through. I think both Dr. Gillespie, which was a different consultant we used for the pre-referendum, who was really trying to plan, you know, really, really long-term out there, and the consultants kind of come to the same point. So, you know, again, if you were to ask me when this process started, I would have told you everything heading out UU is going to be the big area, is going to develop, and exit four, and look at all the land out there, and, boy, we're just going to explode with growth. And the consultant said, no. You know, and their conversations are with the developers, with the city, and the different groups to try to look at the likelihood of the different areas and how quickly they're going to, they're going to develop. Right now, when they originally looked at the area to the south here of Rivercrest, they were thinking that was kind of the five, between that five and 10-year development range, along with Mater Road, which is actually now already going through that clear cutting anywhere from that. The area south, south of that, I'm just going back to the original map, it's on our website. South of that, they were looking at, you know, 10 years plus in some of those areas. The stuff out by Holton, a lot of that was 10 years plus, and a lot of it has to do with there's just no infrastructure out there to do any massive types of development. So as we work through it, you know, one of the things we know when we went to the IJAC meetings, last year, we had a report from both the Town of St. Joe, Town of Hudson. The average new home being built in the Town of St. Joe was $770,000. I think at that time, do you remember that, Jamie, and they talked about that? And that was about a year ago. And the average new home being built in the Town of Hudson was $550,000. Those tend to not be young family starter home-type prices. And so, and I think the consultants kind of heard the same thing as they contacted the different municipalities. So I think there's a lot of land out there in the Town of Hudson, the Town of St. Joe, but with those types of housing values and restrictions, it doesn't...
We don't see the density.
We don't see a lot of, we don't see a lot of kids, you know. So it's just, as we're working through this, so I think, you know, that's... I think some of the development that we thought was going to take a little bit longer is maybe coming a little bit, maybe a little bit quicker. I don't, I mean, I don't know, but, you know, they could develop it, and it could take 10 years to build out. I mean, it really is, it really is a crystal ball. I think the idea that it's not going to happen is probably, would be naive to think that the development's not coming this south. It's just the timing piece. Is it going to happen three years from now, five years from now, seven years from now? You know, when is it going to build out? When are we going to see the kids? You know, that's, we're giving you our best guess. And the committee's recommendation is based on our best educated guess, based on the information that we're getting back, you know, from the consultants, so...
Okay. Anyone else, other questions, as a way we could take a vote? But is there anybody not ready? All right, all those...
You might want to remind people of the motion, since it's been a while.
Yeah. The motion is to approve the committee's recommendation with the exception of Area One staying with Rivercrest. So an aye vote means Area One stays with Rivercrest, okay? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
I hear the nays have it. So we're now back to, we have the motion to keep Area One at Rivercrest failed. So we can either a new motion or move on to the next agenda topic.
Move to approve the committee's recommendation as originally stated with Area One moving to Hudson Prairie.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sue. Further discussion? So, in other words, your recommendation is, let's see, we had the map zoomed out before, but it's basically approving the recommendation with, which includes moving Area One to Hudson Prairie, correct?
That is correct.
Right?
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. All right, moving on to Agenda Item D, which is open enrollment space determinations. I'll turn this over to Andrew.
Okay, so what we have here is something we talked about at the work session, is a recommendation with respect to the 1920 school year. And what we've done is broken it out at the different levels. So, for example, high school is the first part. For 1920, we rolled up the grades. We have some of the assumptions built in, which we talked about at length at the board work session. We also, throughout this entire proposal, have a recommendation that we have a minimum number of seats and a maximum number of seats. So the minimum number would be five open seats per grade across the board, K-12. The maximum number of seats, K-12, would be 20 open seats per grade. So that's where you see some of those floors and tops within these recommendations. So with respect to ninth through 12, there'd be a total of 39 seats for open enrollment, detailed out in the highlighted yellow recommendation box. In addition, as part of that, and it's spelled out here, that based on special education numbers, we would not be having open seats for special education purposes. Then when it comes to the middle school rollup projections, similar type of analysis. And then we would have, applying that to six, seven, eight, grade six, seven, eight, we'd have a total of 51 spots, 11 spots at sixth grade, 27th, and 20 at eighth, again, with a cap of 20. And similar analysis when it comes to special education, that there would not be additional seats, any seats open for, open enrollment purposes for special education. The last one's a little bit more complicated because we did not know what was going to occur as a result of the conversation and board action that was just taken. But based on that, you can look at Option One. It's the initial, or the original committee recommendation. What you see here, first of all, for 4K, because we have a unique situation as compared to K-5, when it comes to our community-based partnership with 4K, we have additional capacity allowed throughout the system. We have multiple providers who have plenty of open spots. And we have in the past, this past year, our first year, or second year, have hit the cap for purposes of open enrollment. So really, there's not a rationale because we are going to require, we're reconsidering it going forward, that we're going to have 40 open seats for 4K. And then they're not yet placed in an elementary school. We would then place them in available spots in the future. And the majority, yes, do not continue from 4K into, that are open enrolled into K through five. So then when it comes to kindergarten, it would be 20 spots, first grade, 20 spots, again, the cap. Second grade is a one window where, based on our projected numbers at this time, very early certainly, but at this time, it would be five spots at second grade, 20 spots at third grade, 20 spots at fourth grade, and 20 spots at fifth grade for a total of 145 open seats for open enrollment purposes. And then Erin can clarify after this next motion, but it is embedded within this recommendation that there would be 10 special education cross-cap program openings as well. So it would be Option One as recommended.
Just a couple of points of clarity. You have on sheet number three at the bottom there, you can see what the history is. So those seem like really large numbers, but actually, in '16, '17, we had 101 spots open, 12 actual students attending with those spots. Last year, we had 151 spots open. We had 25 students actually attending those spots. So I think, and of that, you know, a large portion tend to be, you know, 4K on some of these. So I just want to make sure there's clarification there that just because you're approving these spots, typically, the vast majority of the spots go unclaimed. Even '13, '14, you had 144 spots, and one student actually took a spot. So I just want to make sure everybody's aware that it's not as though we're adding 144 or 150 or whatever students to the district. It just provides openings, and that's only at buildings that have space. The other component is, we would deal with all of our boundary exceptions prior to assigning students to their open enrollment. So students that live in our district or resident students would have a priority over, obviously, kids coming in on a open enrollment, so just as a point of clarification.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve the administrative recommendation.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, further discussion? And I appreciate the clarification you gave, Nick, on the fact that we've had a large number of seats available and usually fewer takers. But again, it's not like we inflated the recommendation to allow for that. This is, if every one of those, you know, applications were submitted, we could accommodate them. But more than that, we're not going to, so we'll see what happens. But is there any other discussion?
And also, just a reminder, is we also built in, we keep open spots for move-ins as well. So we hold at least one spot open in every section as we work through that, so, to account for any potential move-ins.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is granted. Now we have another recommendation with regard to special education open enrollment trends. Turn it over to Erin Schilken, our Chief Schools Officer.
This is the same document that we had gone over in the work session and just breaks it down year by year in how many applicants we've received and just kind of a trend analysis in terms of how many seats we've landed on in each area. So if there's any further questions, I know we discussed this at the last meeting.
So the recommendation, Erin, is 10 open seats?
Yep, the recommendation is 10 open seats in neighborhood cross-categorical services for special education.
For K-5?
Right.
Move to approve the 2019, '20 special education open enrollment space as presented.
Second. All right. Rob beat you to it, Sue.
It's fine.
Yep, and as noted, there was, the numbers have been in double digits for as far as approved on that cross-categorical, and we've had four, actually, two total people that attended out of six applications over the last three years. Correct. So, all right. Any further comments? Otherwise, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion passes. Next up, we, just to note that we're striking the middle school capital improvement review. That will be taken up at another meeting. The overnight travel, which was discussed for, you know, at least one meeting ago and possibly two. We've got, who's handling the overnight travel?
I'll take that, Mr. President.
All right, Dave, yeah, your name's on next to that, all right.
All right, well, thank you. Yes, and as Jamie said, we discussed these earlier. Some minor changes as requested by the board, some detail and a few minor edits. And then there is, in that attachment, a more detailed itinerary for the choir trip. One thing that we run into in this planning process, because we get out of it, are out in front of it so far in advance, which is great, it allows for all the time we need to plan appropriately, sometimes some of the details haven't been fleshed out. So some of these things, the details are subject to change, but we do meet with all of the groups before they go to go over final plan. of the groups before they go, to go over final plans and some safety checks as well. So, this proposal is looking at three different trips, the choir trip to Austria, Italy, and Germany for a number of performances. That is March 23rd to 27th, looking at between 50 and 125 students for a cost range between $3,100 and $3,500 per student, all of these.
I'm sorry, which, which year is that? You said March?
That is for 2020.
2020, thank you.
Yes, yep, thank you. And important to note, all these prices per student don't reflect any potential fundraising that they could do to get the prices down. Second trip is to China with Mandarin Chinese students, June of 2020, and approximately 12 students for a cost of $2,700. And that would be led by Leo Wagner, a Mandarin teacher. And then, the final trip is actually not international, but we go through the same process for overnight trips beyond 100 miles. This is to Orlando, and this is Raid Ares, led by Kristen Vanderbroecky. And there's two sets of dates there, because this would be an example of, because we're out in front of this, the dates for the, from the organization at the time of this, when we put this together, we're not, we're not determined yet. So, they're either February 27th of 2020 through March 2nd, or March 5th through March 9th. Include three days of dance competition for up to 30 students, cost about $1,500.
Okay, thank you for that report. Short answer is, nothing has changed since the work session where this was reviewed.
That is accurate.
Okay, Sue.
I'm just going to propose that we approve the changes and approve the, you know, recommend, the travel, whatever it's called, the travel proposals.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, to approve the administration's recommendations with regard to overnight travel for what would essentially be the next year and a half. And again, highlighting Dave's comment, just because the board approves it at this meeting doesn't mean that it's an absolute go. If there were change in international relations between now and then, anything that would affect the safety of students, that would take precedent over that. But this is important to get this approved, so that fundraising can start, because as we can see, some of these are cost prohibitive. We try to approve trips that are more affordable, but just in reality, it's not the case that you can do that all the time. But this is an opportunity for lots of students, and hopefully, we can be more inclusive. So, with that, is there any further comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Next up on the agenda is comparable districts for employee groups. Turn it over to Andrew.
Okay, well, I am super excited to propose this, because we, I truly am, because we worked really hard after my HR group, after the last work session, to be reflective about some of the guidance that you guys gave us, one of which was, consider some smaller schools, and also try to have a better balance between the Minnesota and Wisconsin among, across the board. And I think we have. I'm pretty pumped about the recommendation here. So, certified staff, what we have here would be significantly different. All these are significantly different than, other than support staff, which we're not touching. But the other groups are significantly different than what they've been previously, which I think is going to put us in a good position, and I'm really excited to start gathering information once these are approved, hopefully, by you guys. But first of all, certified staff, it would be includes, including Eau Claire, and the tabs at the bottom also have all the backup data. So, if you want to look at the numbers, the enrollment, all those pieces, that's included within each of the individual tabs, which also highlights the schools that we're recommending. Again, certified staff would be Eau Claire, Elm Brook, Howard Swamaco, Norriton River Falls from Wisconsin, Richfield, Forest Lake, South Wash, Washington County, and Stillwater and White Bear Lake. So, Richfield is smaller than us, so that would be a change. And then, also, for consistency's sake, I included them within the Admin Principles, Assistant Directors, Coordinators, and Deans as well, for, again, each of the comp groups. Eliminated Roseville from all the recommendations as part of this. Think that Richfield would be a better, looking at some of the breakdown of their staff, and their, how they label different positions, their classifications of positions, that that would be a good comp. And then, with the addition of South Wash, which is a much bigger district, and White Bear Lake, which is a little bigger as well, I didn't think that it was necessary to have Roseville on top of it, but I could talk about this for a while, and I won't do that to you guys. So, that would be certified staff. Administrators, Principals, a little more balanced, where we have Eau Claire, Elm Brook, Howard Swamaco, and Chippewa Falls within the Wisconsin schools, Richfield, Forest Lake, West St. Paul, Mendota Heights, Eagan, which is very comparable size-wise, South Wash, Stillwater, White Bear Lake. Assistant Directors, Coordinators, and Deans, this is where it's a little nuanced, because the recommendation would be Eau Claire, Elm Brook, Howard Swamaco, Menominee Falls, not Chippewa Falls. And we talked a little at the work session about the fact that Chippewa Falls doesn't have a lot of mid-level positions. What I found, digging deeper into their data, is that they had, the district, Wisconsin districts tend to either go one of two routes. They either have Assistant Directors, or they may have 10 Administrative Assistants supporting a program. So, if, depending on which way they go, it's easier to compare to us or not. We've gotten more of the Assistant Director level, and so that's why, when we pulled up Menominee Falls, they have more comparable positions than a Chippewa Falls. And that's where there's the difference between the two groups. Then, Richfield, Forest Lake, West St. Paul, Mendota Heights, Eagan, South Wash, Stillwater and White Bear Lake would be within that group as well.
It's a piece of art.
Thank you.
Is there?
I just have a couple more districts I'd like her to look into.
I do have the other column where we will continue to look, because we want it to be responsive, right? We want it to be, who are we competing against? Who are we losing people to? And I think we always want to be cognizant of other districts that are on the cusp of that, of those parameters.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I just, Andrea, are you excited about this one, or?
I guess, well, the next step is actually gathering the data and analyzing it, and we are pumped to do that.
So, if we table this, you couldn't do that, right? Appreciate your enthusiasm for the data crunching. Thank you.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, there's a motion, a second, to approve. Is there any further discussion? I just want to say, good job, Andrea, on presenting this. I know that by this time, there's been a lot of board questions. I mean, we spent a good half hour, if not 45 minutes, on this one alone at the work session, well, at two meetings, actually, because this has been something that gets revisited from time to time, and appropriately so, there's fluctuations. But I really like the customizing of the comparables to the different areas because of the different levels. And essentially, what you're saying in that fourth category with Assistant Directors, Coordinators, and Deans, on the Wisconsin side, there's just not, the triangle is more thin. There's just not many at the middle level, like there would be with districts that are our size or bigger.
Yes.
So, that's why we're going to Menominee Falls, or Howard Swamaco, or Elm Brook, when it comes to Wisconsin comparables. There's, Eau Claire, obviously, is larger than us, but it's really our closest competitor when it, when you're looking at size of district, so. All right, any further comments? All those in favor of approving the recommendations for the comparables for each of the areas as outlined, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's approved. Final is what we've all been waiting for tonight.
That's right.
Which is the WASB resolutions.
I was shocked when people got up earlier in the meeting, because I thought for sure this is what people had come to the meeting for. You've been given in your, in a separate email, administrative recommendations, if you had questions, essentially, I believe Bob, is that right, is the delegate? So, we will make sure that he safely arrives down in Milwaukee and is able to carry out your wishes as you look at this. But essentially, if you haven't had an opportunity, Tim and I went through a lot of these, the different resolutions, we sent it to you, and WASB 2019 recommendation. If, if, if it didn't, if it didn't have a recommendation, it was essentially neutral, but there are certain things I just want to touch base on. The Resolution 19.303.
Is it dash 03?
Dash 03. Student poverty and revenue limits, we gave it not supportive, and part of the reason is not because we're not supportive of, of waiting kids as it relates to student poverty and, and things along those lines. It's just that our, when it comes to our district, we do not have tremendous amount of students in poverty. We know that also, that the pie is only so big in the state, and so, if the state starts waiting kids by, or waiting, funding for districts based on the percentage of poverty, that may have an adverse effect on state funding for our district. So, it's not because we don't think that the kids in poverty shouldn't be waited, it's just, as we're trying to give these recommendations, it's based on what we think the impact could be on the, on the school district.
So, our recommendation is for Bob to vote no on that one?
Yeah, it would be no on that one. Resolution 19 dash 06, competitive grants, for the exact same reason, you know, waiting grants potentially through free reduced lunch levels, because we have such a low level, could potentially put the district at a disadvantage in achieving, you know, in receiving those grants. What I'm trying to hit on is some of the things that we're not supportive of, and why, and everything else you guys have kind of access to, but for the most part, everything else is pretty supportive. Resolution 19 dash 19, Higher Learning Commission. Part of the, part of the thing is, is not real supportive. WASB supports federal legislation require higher education accrediting agency to relax credentialing requirements for high school staff who teach dual credit courses to maximize a district's ability to provide dual credit programming. I think the big thing is, anytime when you're starting to relax those expectations, is are you also then starting to relax the expectations of what happens in those courses? And so, we want to maintain a high level. We want our kids, whether they take the course in, in our district, or they take the course at one of the UW schools, that people are pretty confident that the instructor has the same level of credentials regardless. And essentially, that's, I mean, it could go either way, but that's kind of the rationale behind that non-supportive. And then, the last non-supportive, the early college credit, College Start Now, which is a really long resolution, which is 19 point, sorry, 19 dash 21, just not supportive of limiting the number of credits, because we think this is a great opportunity for our kids. We have a lot of college-bound kids that, and technical-bound kids, where we would like to see them have more opportunities to take college-level classes at high school. However, if, if this continues to be a non-funded mandate, which it has been lately, where we are paying the tuition for these things, and there's no state money to come with it, then we, you know, we, we could then think that those limits would become prudent, because that can create some, some challenges for us financially, so.
This is the resolution that relates to what we just changed our policies to be consistent with state statute, right?
Yeah, so what it is, is this resolution is to try to limit the number of courses that kids would be able to be eligible for, and we're saying, we'd like kids to be able to take lots of courses, get lots of credit.
Well, that's the one thing that Hudson School Districts kind of set us apart, is that we kind of lead in that area of those type of classes.
We're pushing to get as many as we, as we can, so. Any questions about any of the other resolutions, or any of our administrative recommendations? More than happy to, to talk through them, but.
Just one general one, so more than half of these resolutions have to do with amending prior resolutions, is that right? So, they have some kind of book that just keeps these resolutions going each year, and then, then they revisit as mandates from Madison might change, or.
Correct.
School districts push back against what happens in Madison.
Yes.
And, all right. So, we're generally supportive, but there's some that specifically don't help us so much.
That may be, may potentially have a negative impact on the district.
I really like this one about reducing the number of school board members in a district. You didn't highlight that one, and it makes it simpler for us to reduce it by two, so.
I think it was in bold supportive.
I think if, if that would have been proposed before tonight's meeting, we might have had two takers on that one, I don't know. All right, so is there, yes.
I would just like to say that it's hard to follow Andrea's enthusiasm, but I am keyed up to get down to Milwaukee and get up at 8:00 in the morning on Thursday, Wednesday, and, and thanks, Rob, ahead of time for your direction and support, being, helping me make sure I get there.
All right. And he's that always trusty backup, in case you fall to illness or something, so. All right, is there a motion to approve our positions as highlighted?
Move to approve.
All right.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. And thank you, though, for your work in that. I know it, we make a little light of it, but it is, people spend a lot of time at that. In fact, there are some school boards that have a committee, and nothing they do, that's what they do for an annual basis, is, you know, create resolutions for the whole state. But I think our approach is a better one, so we can focus on what is important locally. But anyway, with that comment, I will entertain a motion to move to closed session pursuant to the exact language.
And then, you have to repeat the language prior to the vote.
Okay.
Mr. President?
All right, yes.
Board will consider a motion to convene to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85, paren, one, paren C, to consider the performance evaluation of employees, and 19.85, paren, one, paren F, to consider social or personal histories, or disciplinary data of such employees, which if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantially, a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data.
Second.
Motion by Carey, second by Bruce. And the motion will have to be decided by a roll call vote, and I'm told that now the procedure will be, I will restate the motion. The board will consider a motion to convene to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85, paren, one, paren C, to consider the performance evaluation of employees, and 19.85, paren, one, paren F, to consider social or personal histories, or disciplinary data of such employees, which, if discussed in public, would likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data. Bauman. Brown.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Kattas.
Aye.
Logland.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. The motion carries. We will adjourn to a library for the closed session. Thank you.